We're recording.
Okay, so I'm gonna start in accordance with the Governor Executive Order, the Illinois Department of Public Health Regulations and the Center of Disease Control.
Thank you for having me.
guidance. The city has determined that in-person meetings or meetings conducted under the purview of the Open Meetings Act is not practical or prudent, therefore, remote participation is permitted. According to the City Hall, we'll be close to the public except for a certain.
You don't have to read that part, Tony.
So can I start with the Public Works?
Now you're right, call them.
And roll call. I'd like to call the, the order of the Public Works Committee, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Alderman Woods.
Here, here, here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yeah.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Messina.
Here, yeah, here, sorry.
Okay.
So we have a quorum. Next is, I need approval of the minutes of December 10th, 2020, Public Works.
Second.
Any corrections? Or, no corrections, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Roll call, will you?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now we have a report recommendation. First one is a presentation of concept plan for the Veterans Memorial Landscaping Improvement Project by H.R. Green. Director Lang, do you want to touch on that for a minute?
I will. Thank you very much, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'll just give a brief introduction and then I will give it off to our two representatives from H.R. Green who are on the call tonight with us. This project has been discussed several times by committee previously in several different iterations, going back to when the plant improvements of the North Waste Water Treatment Plant were completed. Late last year, the council decided to install some bronze military service medallions at one of the buildings adjacent to the Veterans Memorial. And they directed staff to enter into an agreement with H.R. Green to design several concept plans for the landscaping at the Veteran Memorial. To kind of improve the overall aesthetics of the area and to increase the visibility of the medallions themselves. Within the CIP this year, we budgeted $75,000 for these improvements. I'll have to verify the exact funds, but we also will have some funds available left over from this year's CIP. I just want to stress that we are kind of on a tight timeline. Our original goal was to have the improvements installed by Memorial Day of this year. So if we are unable to come to an agreement tonight, it's likely that that, that goal will not be feasible and the planting would have to be pushed off until spring, most likely. So with that, I will give it over to Kristen Little, who is the Landscape Architecture Associated with H.R. Green, and Ron Call.
Thanks, Alan. Good evening, everybody. Alan had recommended or talked there. I am actually going to be giving the presentation. Now, Alan, are you going to be sharing your screen or do you need me to be sharing mine?
I'm trying to share right now. Here we go. Technical difficulties. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So I'm actually gonna start really quickly in just a couple of quick things. One, I do talk kind of fast, so please, anytime during this presentation, if you have questions, just, you know, stop me, let me, you know, I'm gonna go pretty quickly here because there's a lot of information to cover. Second, the other thing I want to stress here is that these are conceptual designs. That is the phase that we are currently in. So nothing that you're gonna see today is completely set in stone. So, you know, if there's revisions or if there's something about the designs that you'd like to see tweaked, that is, we're still capable of doing that. So keep that open, keep that kind of open mind as we go through this. And with that, Alan, go ahead and switch slides for me. Perfect. Okay, so when we start any project, one of the things that we really like to do is obviously get a really good understanding of the existing conditions of the site that we are looking at. So we did go out and do an initial site visit, walked the site, took lots of pictures, took some measurements, got a really good feel for what we're currently working with. So this should look really familiar to you all. Got a couple of pictures, obviously, of your existing monument sign. And the picture in the bottom left-hand corner is obviously where your new medallions are gonna be going, and then just some different views into the site. So you'll see those on the far right and top and bottom. And then we do have a reference map on the far right to just kind of give you an understanding of where those pictures were taken from, if you're not 100% sure. A slide. Once again, just a couple more shots here. Can't stress enough that, you know, these site visits are great for us to get an understanding of what's currently happening and then as somebody or visitor is walking through the site, what they're viewing currently and what the space feels like and how we're gonna transition it into a new location. So a couple more locate, you know, site views right now of what we are currently working with. Slide. Perfect. So I'm not gonna spend too much time on this visual, but I do like to stress that this is one of the key elements for any landscape designer when they're starting to begin their design, is their inventory and analysis. This is what helps give us a lot of understanding of design decisions that we're gonna be making down the road. So this is just kind of looking at opportunities. This is just a really fresh look. There's obviously nothing in here that really drives what we're seeing. It's just studies from when we did our site visit. So, you know, if you look in the top here, you're gonna see that we just thought, hey, here's an opportunity where we feel an additional pedestrian connection could be made to tie the parking lot to the space. You have three access points. Our understanding that this is used for a lot of events. So just looking at different connections into the space, we look at what impacts traffic noises happening and where those are occurring. You're seeing the yellow viewports. Those are some major views that we thought were important. Areas where we thought that there needs to be landscape buffering, obviously, our focal point right in the center around your internal flame that's existing. And then, you know, just looking at pedestrian connection and vehicular connection and how those things impact. Couple of things to note as we move through these presentations. We are recommending, there is a utility box currently that is located between Irving Park Road and the actual plaza. We are recommending that maybe be lowered just to open up the view because as I'm gonna stress in the next slide, views were very, very critical to us. That was one of the things, a lot of the feedback that we got is, as Alan mentioned as he introduced us, views into the site is key. You guys want to be able to see the space. You want to be able to see those medallions that are coming down the road. And then we've also talked a little bit about irrigation, which I can touch on a little bit further down through the presentation. Next slide. As I mentioned, views were one of the things that's super, super important to us. So we did do extensive view studies into the space from vehicle points, from pedestrian points when you're driving by, and some of the openness that we want to be creating. Obviously, what you currently have right now, there's a lot of existing mature evergreen trees, which we are recommending being completely removed to open the space up. So this, this actual study that you're seeing here is what drove a lot of the design decisions that you're going to see in the following pages. Slide. And then I always like to highlight some of the things that were stressed to us during some of our conversations. So just some of the things that really stood out or were repeated multiple times. A sense of inclusion was wanted within the plaza space for visitors. Didn't want to feel like you were sitting on top of the road, but you didn't, you didn't want to have any loss of, of obviously the view into the space. Wanted to frame the medallions that are gonna be hung up on, on that south-facing wall. Once again, the views, seasonal interest was huge. Spring, summer, fall, you want something happening all throughout the season, nothing that's, you know, too plain. And that you want to create, obviously, that sense of memorial respect that comes with having a memorial park and then keeping in mind that the maintenance of the park and keeping lower maintenance plant material. Slide. And with that, we are going to dive into our first concept here. So I know there's a lot happening here. And actually, if we move to the next slide, we're gonna zoom in a little bit, but I do want to highlight a couple of things here. You're gonna see on the upper left-hand corner on your existing building that's there, we are relocating some existing crab apples. And we are adding, obviously, along from that south or from the west parking lot, we're framing, adding some new landscaping there where that medallions are gonna go. And then we're starting to create that sense of inclusion that we've already mentioned earlier. And then we're playing around with some berm ideas on that southwest corner where we're now opening up that view entirely. Slide. So this is just a zoomed-in plan. This kind of helps focus in a little bit of what we're looking at doing here. As I mentioned, we've got from that west parking lot, we're gonna be framing in the space around those medallions, giving that sense of enclosure. I really wanted, in all the concepts that we created for you guys, to give that sense of a journey starting from start to finish. So as soon as you arrive into the space, I wanted stuff happening. And then that transitions all the way into the plaza space. We did do some revisions to your guys' monument sign, just to kind of, it's a little tired, a little mature, and I want to be able to see that, that beautiful granite sign that you have there and the columns that are there. I think it's fantastic. So I really wanted to kind of open that up and freshen it up a bit. Wanted to create more of a sense of inviting from, on that south sidewalk, and then, like I said, onto the berm. I'm gonna go into a little more details when we move through here because I know right now this is just circles on paper. So I do have some visulates for you guys to look at in the following pages. Next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna stress probably, I'm gonna spend a lot of time on this slide just for a couple of minutes, and this is going to follow through the next two concepts as well. One of the things that I thought was super important, especially with the understanding that seasonal interest was huge for you all, is the plant palette. A lot of people think, okay, well, spring, you're gonna have bulbs. Summer, I need flowers blooming in the summer, and then I want something in the winter. And a lot of people gets, you know, hooked on the idea that winter interest plant material is just evergreens, which is not true. It's a common misconception. There's a lot of plant palette selections that you can make that give you seasonal interest all season long. So a lot of the plant palette decisions that were made were based off of their ability that from spring through winter, if left up, and these are recommendations that we can make to you all as well. They give you that, that year-round interest. So I do want to talk about that, that you may not be seeing lots of evergreens happening here, and there's reason behind that. Also, plant palette was selected for its textures, the heights that we can create of the varying heights and colors. Colors were actually another important study that we did. We, we took a look at, what do colors mean to people and what kind of emotions can they evoke when you see them? You know, for instance, you're, you're gonna see yellow happening a lot. Yellow is generally tied to the idea of hope and positivity. I thought that was very, very important and ties well to the Veterans Park. You're gonna see a lot of purples, which is wisdom and devotion and peace and pride. So I really wanted to take kind of the symbolism behind the colors as well and introduce that through your plant palette. Another thing to note is our plant palette was also selected because of the kind of architectural prairie style that you guys have going on your existing building. So I did want to speak to the existing infrastructure and bring that a life, bring that to life through our plant palette. Next slide. Just a continuation of the pages that we're talking about, and I'll go into a little more detail on these. But here's where you're gonna see, I did introduce some evergreens as well, just to give you some seasonal interest, some winter interest from an evergreen standpoint. Slide. Okay, here's our first rendering of the space based off of Concept One. So this should look pretty familiar to you. At bottom right-hand corner of your screens, this is your existing conditions, the medallions that you're showing there. Those are actually.
Need to advance the slide.
Actually, no, we were on the right one, Alan. I'm sorry. There you go. Okay. So yeah, the medallions, that's actually showing the exact layout of your guys' medallions. I know they're colored or bruns, just to kind of give you the concept idea of three on the left and two on the right. Believe those are the decisions that are made. You're gonna see a row of red poppies that are gonna be planted immediately below those medallions. As I'm sure many of you are aware, the poppy was a plant during World War One that was used to symbolize remembrance for people who had passed during the war. So we did want to obviously introduce that to here, and we thought right below the medallions was a better place. I mentioned earlier that I really wanted to kind of play around with the concept of scale, is that as you came into this place, you were kind of engulfed into it. For me, one of the things during my practice that I've, I've really found and I like to play with is when you're working in a park space like a Veterans Memorial, the memorial is supposed to signify something that's much, much bigger than us, right? We're, we're talking about war, we're talking about people that have lost. And so, scale to me, I think, is a great way to kind of play around with creating feeling for people. And so I want the space to bring you in and give a sense of scale change, allow people to connect with that larger picture of a memorial and what it signifies. You know, this is not a museum. It's not a history lesson per se. It's really just a reflection of the past, of the past battles, the reasons for those battles and the lives that were lost. And I feel scale helps bring that to life and makes people feel a little bit smaller in an idea that's much bigger. So you're gonna have these large grasses in the front that kind of engulf you when you come in, giving you that scale change and also giving you that soft view up to those medallions. One other thing to note on this slide is I am making a recommendation within that swale that happens throughout your site here of introducing some river rock buffer. This is just a means that as plant materials introduced and over time, I understand you guys invested a lot of money, obviously, into your stormwater management system and the water wastewater treatment plants. So just an additional layer here, add some river rock around there with some landscape fabric. It just helps collect additional debris that can end up in that stormwater system so that you don't end up having something clogged and then you're going in and scoping it out and all the jazz that comes with that. So just a small recommendation there. Slide. Thank you. So this is looking from the existing bridge. You're gonna be looking north towards the administrative building. You're gonna see on the far left side, now we've introduced some different plant material along that foundation wall. Just to soften it up a little bit, I heard a rumor that the mayor really, really likes burning bush, so we made sure to reintroduce some of those along that foundation wall. So you're gonna get that beautiful blood red color during the fall months. You're also gonna see on that left-hand side as well, the first three, three, I think, trees that are shown there are the existing trees. I mentioned earlier that there are two crab apples that we are looking to relocate, so we are just completing that line there. So this is what that view would look like. One other thing to note here, I'm sure you're all kind of looking in the center of this picture going, what's going on in the background there? I mentioned during our inventory and analysis that we did kind of see an opportunity for a pedestrian connection from that back parking lot. So just wanted to kind of show a visual of what potentially could happen if you guys decide to proceed with something down the road of introducing another sidewalk, and then obviously a bridge would be necessary, like the one you have currently, to tie you into that space. Slide. Thank you. And this is looking from Irving Park Road. Once again, bottom right-hand corner is our existing condition. Yeah, so you're seeing all those evergreen trees. Once they're removed, kind of what the view looks like. This was huge. I wanted this view into the space to be completely open. I think your internal flame is absolutely stunning. Obviously, it's, it's very symbolic and so the opening of this view was key for me. And I wanted to frame it, continue the concept that you guys have with your big, beautiful maple trees, and then kind of stair-step down to some smaller ornamentals on the outside, which tie to your existing trees that line the plaza space. And then you'll see some of our scale figures, figures, which are the white people in your, whitest gray colored people in your picture here. That just gives you an idea of scales, that we're not introducing anything majorly tall. I think one of, you know, the, actually, Ron, I think you might be in one of these pictures. I'm not sure. Um, he's about six feet tall, so everything here gives you that sense of inclusion without blocking our views into the space. All right, slide. Thank you. Okay, and then this is looking, if you're standing on the bridge and you're heading east towards your monument sign, this is what your view would look like as soon as you come off of your, your bridge. You're gonna notice that our scale figure immediately in the foreground here has his hand out. Another thing for me with veterans parks or memorial parks is I feel that sensory is huge for people to connect with the space beyond just obviously having monuments around and so on and so forth. I love the idea of visitors being able to kind of come in and interact with the landscape. So these green plants that you're seeing in the front, it's called Blue Star, and it is an extremely soft textured plant. Comes up super early in the spring. It has some great, great seasonal interest. But what's fantastic about this is you can kind of run your hand through it, and when the wind blows through a massing of this, it's very symbolic and kind of reminds me personally of like a prairie when you get a big, huge wind, you know, wind sweep that comes through. So there's a lot of movement there. So I did want to create that interaction, so kind of a sensory happening there so that as you enter into the space, you feel like you're a part of what's happening. And then once again, you're gonna see our color combinations, which I kind of alluded to earlier with the yellows and the purples. And then we do have kind of the classic approach to landscape that happens as soon as you come in, where you've got your taller plant material in the back, creating that sense of inclusion, and then we stair-step down. One other thing you're gonna see in this rendering as well is we are addressing the existing maple tree braze planters that are within the plaza space. Kind of want to just clean those up with some fresh plant material that can withstand being other under large maple trees like that. Maples are very dense. They're very competitive when it comes to plant, plant material underneath it. So I did want to introduce some hostas. The ones shown here are Patriot Hostas. Seems very fitting, in my opinion. And then you'll get the purple, purple flowers that come up off of that and just mound that up, give a nice dense full green coverage underneath those, those maples. Slide. All right, so now we're moving on to Concept Two, and I'm actually gonna skip this slide that just gives you an overall view, but the next slide will actually show you the differences with Concept Two. So everything highlighted in here is going to be the difference. So the way that we did these concepts, just to mention this as well, is we used one as our foundation plan, and then everything that we built after that is kind of additional sprinkles. So it's different, different layers added to it, but it's all kind of based off of the same concept. So if you were to put this next to Concept One, you're gonna see the original plan just with the additional pieces that come into it. So you're gonna see we kind of added a little more wrapping around the swale that is highlighted, and this is just a concept. When I was out on the site, I just really wanted to put something into that swale, especially with the compensatory basin that is located on the east side of the property. And I know there's been some discussion about changing out that plant material and refreshing it with something more lively, a little more native, kind of what you're doing throughout the city in a lot of your kind of detention and retention areas, is introducing more native plant material that's cleaner looking, better for the environment, so on and so forth. So I just felt this opportunity that that swale is another location where if we want to tie this whole site together and make Veterans Park and that east side really feel like one space, I thought this was just a concept that I wanted to present to you guys, that it might be an interesting, interesting idea to give that whole site, is introducing another native bed into there. Once again, just a concept, does not have to happen. This plan could stand alone without that happening and that still remaining turf. You're also gonna see on here in the upper northern side of this plan, we've now framed in this plaza space a little bit with an additional bed. We framed the southern landscape, has now come out to the sidewalk along Irving Park Road to really invite people in. In addition on this plan, I did want to show one concept where we don't introduce any new plant material onto the existing berm. That would just become more seed inside where the landscape actually happens just immediately outside where your medallions are gonna be. All right. I'm not gonna spend too much time on the plant palette since we kind of dove into that earlier with Concept One. The one thing I do want to note here is that from concept to concept, I am not changing the plant palette. I am just adding additional layers of the same plant material. The reason behind that is that as you add more and more and more plant material to introduce, obviously, different mixes, your maintenance is also going to go up a little bit. Every plant has its specific maintenance needs. So I focused my plant palette into this focused group, and then I just added additional from that. So I just wanted to make sure to mention that as we go into Concept Two and Three is, yes, this is the exact same thing. It's just more of them happening around the site, so it's a very cohesive. Slide. And then you can slide once more. Perfect. Alrighty, so this is looking from that original view that we're looking at. You're gonna see the additional layers happening. This is kind of showing you the concept of introducing a low sedge grass into that swale. I don't want to introduce anything too tall. I really want this to be very, very low, so it does, does tie to that compensatory basin on the east side. Very simplistic. Like I said, this would just kind of look like really fluffy grass, and we could introduce some plugs into there to give you some seasonal color, as you're seeing represented here with the pink flowers. In addition to this, we've added one more layer that frames that all in. So this foreground plant material is kind of creating the framework of what's gonna look like from the street view, looking towards your medallions. Everything that you're seeing from the wall to the grass in the background is the same as, as Concept One, but this just shows you the additional layering that is happening. Slide. Perfect. So this is, once again, this is just showing you the idea that if we did like the idea of introducing low grassy mixes into that swale, this is what that would look like. I would recommend that if we move with something like this, some sort of edging would be required to create the separation and the cleanliness, but that is what that would look like. If we're not keen on that idea, Alan, go ahead and switch slides. It would just be like what you saw on your original slide. So kind of that clean look, the addition of those crab apples in the foundation, what will be the same. So just wanted to show you the two differences between those two. Alrighty, here's an additional rendering for you. As I mentioned earlier, I do really love your guys' monument. I love the flags. I love the columns. I think it's fantastic. So I really did want to kind of focus on this area, freshen this up a little bit, frame it in a different style and lower some of that plant material so that really stands out as, and is the focal point of the landscape. Immediately around the flags, I saw an opportunity to introduce some annual flowers. Obviously, that can be rotated, spring, summer, fall, and winter. A lot of fun stuff that you can do on the market today with all those four seasons. Gives you guys an opportunity to play around with colors, whether that's red, white, and blue. I believe for this rendering, I just showed begonias as an option. Immediately around that, I'm framing that very soft textures, kind of like what I talked about earlier from that bridge view of being able to touch and kind of interact. This is just a grass that creates, you know, soft movement, and then we're framing around that from there. But that just gives you an idea of looking towards your monument sign, kind of cleaned up what that view could look like. Alrighty, moving on to Concept Three. I'm gonna do the same thing here. This is the overall plan, but if we move to the next slide, you're gonna see the differences from Concept Two to Concept Three. So obviously, on the left-hand side of our plaza, we have completely framed in the plaza space, given you landscaping pretty much 360 around. You are gonna get that sense of inclusion happening 100%. Still keeping with the concept here of potentially introducing native seagrass into that swale around the existing building, but that bed that happens along that east foundation wall of the existing building is now expanded. So pretty much from the wall, from the foundation wall to the plaza, that removes all the turf from within that bed in this concept and just introduces plant material along the hallway. Also on here, we've reintroduced the berm back into the concept, and we've opened, we've played around a little bit with opening up the backside of that swale so that you can see into that space if we decide to proceed with that concept. Plant palette again, like I said, just adding more of everything that you've seen previously. Slide. Slide. All right, and then once again, I said, mentioned when we started looking at Concept Three, we opened up the backside of this swale with the native seed mix that's in there. So just wanted to show you kind of what that would look like immediately juxtaposed to the existing side. So if you're standing out on the sidewalk, kind of looking into the space, this is what that view would look like. So it's a little more open. Slide. Alrighty, so here is this concept with the plant material. As I mentioned, this is eliminating any of the grass seed pretty much from that foundation wall you're seeing on the left to your plaza space. Very dense, very full, lots of color happening here. You're kind of walking over a meadow and walking into this space. So, you know, lots, lots happening here, but this does create, obviously, little, little mowing maintenance required here, eliminates the turf that's necessary. Once again, though, if we don't like this concept, slide. Go ahead, slide. Okay, this would be if you guys did not like the idea of introducing any sort of plant material into the swale, want to keep it kind of clean, you like the side. This is what that, that bed would look like. So you're gonna have ground cover up to the bed on the left-hand side. You can see how we have expanded that bed out a little bit to creep into that swale, and then the framing landscape that we've added immediately around the plaza space to your right. All right, so this is actually very similar to what you saw earlier. The only thing I wanted to show you here is because we've now framed in the plaza entirely, you've now added plant material to the left-hand corner of your screen. That is literally the only change. I know it doesn't show a lot, but I do love the idea of how you're kind of walking into this space in this picture. All right, one other thing that I wanted to mention, I haven't stressed it too much so far, is along the south side of your administrative, administrative building, and obviously, the, the treatment plant, we've got a foundation wall. You're seeing it, obviously, in your right-hand corner there. So I'm thinking about being towards Irving Park, the entrance, like, coming off the bridge and you're looking through the plaza, back to the back wall, and you're kind of just seeing brick. Kind of gave me this, this, I want to call it like jail, but just very.
Fort.
Yeah. A lot of brick. Yeah, very, very fort-esque. So I just figured introducing some softening landscape along that back wall would be a great way to just kind of hide that wall a little bit. Yes, industrial, I suppose, is a good way to put it. Once again, I'm showing here, hey, we've got that river rock that I'm recommending around your catch basins, rainstorm water, just to help with any debris. But that wall just gets softened up a little bit with some burning bush and some grass throughout the whole season so that when you're standing in the space and you're looking to the back, back wall, you're not just seeing brick back there. All right, so I mentioned earlier the concept that plant palettes have seasonal interest without it always having to be all evergreens. You know, we live in Zone Five, we're in Illinois Midwest, and we, we have all four seasons. So winter can be kind of difficult when you're covered in snow, and how do you introduce that? So I did want to do a study and show this to y'all of how, starting from spring through winter, the plant palette would evolve throughout the whole season. So the top one is obviously what's gonna be occurring in spring. Upper right-hand corner, you're seeing the, the evergreen plant material that we have introduced into the space. Obviously, that's going to be happening all the time, 365 days a year. Those guys will be green. And then in that second row from summer, fall, and winter. And then in that second row from summer, fall and winter, the plant material that is immediately below each picture is actually its evolution throughout the season. So I do always like, I, I wanted to show this just to give you guys an idea that there are ways to create seasonal interest in the winter months and in the fall months, just depending on how you maintain your landscape. Me personally, obviously like grasses and stuff like that. I love to leave up during the winter. Because to me, there's nothing more romantic than certain plant material with a soft dusting of snow like we recently had. So like I said, I thought this was a great visual just to show you that with the plant palette, there are evolutions throughout the season and what it could look like. Okay, there was one other detail that we talked about with the team. And that was the potential of locating, whether it was a cannon or a statue of some sort, or just some small military equipment on the site. And we did want to show that we have done studies on this, locations for that to happen. If you guys do decide to do that down the road, any of the concepts that we've presented to you, these are the spaces that we would recommend for those things to happen. One is along the berm on the southwest corner. Just thought that as kind of an imitation, I think currently right now, there's a bell that's sitting out there. So if that became a cannon, kind of the invite into the space. The second location is off to the east, that orange square that you're seeing there. I loved the idea, if you're standing in by that, the eternal flame and you're looking over to that compensatory basin. And whether it's the existing material now, or if it's changed out native plant material like that you potentially moving forward, that piece of equipment would kind of look like it's floating on that, that soft background of, of the native plant material. So I just thought that was a great spot to kind of carry your eye across the space. And then utilize that compensatory basin as a backdrop for that equipment. So did want to show you guys that we did do a study and that the potential is there if you guys decide to proceed with something like that. And then this was one other thing, Ron and I did kind of play around with the idea. There was a brief discussion about furnishings on the site. So we wanted to just give you a concept here that if you decide to update, we thought this was a really interesting concept of purchasing, whether it's granite or if it's concrete benches like this, and then having etched into them those five different concepts. Cause you do currently have five benches in your space. And then this would just add an additional layer. So I'm imagining your administrators coming out from the building on a beautiful summer day to have lunch in the space. They go over and they sit on these benches and they look down and etches a letter from, you know, letter home from a soldier. Or it's the medallions and it just creates that additional layer of interaction within the space. Kind of creates this little touch of, of fun in addition to what you currently already have. And then obviously just an update, an upgraded trash receptacle as a recommendation, if you guys decided that furnishings were necessary.
Pictures would fit in there also.
Yeah, which would be fantastic. I love that. Okay, slide. And then on the breakdown, we just wanted to give you some estimated costs. These are obviously very broad range, starting from concept one to concept three. But just to give you an idea of way the concepts are currently laid out and then the associated bullets that go with that. So all of the concepts include obviously the labor to remove all the existing plant material. This does exclude the removal of the existing trees. Preparation of those, you know, those new planting beds, amended soil, give those guys the best plant beds to, to evolve from. On the installation of obviously the river rock around those catch basins, installation of all the new plant material. A little budget for annual flowers is recommended. Mulching of those beds and then an allowance for irrigation for couplers. So all of those will be consistent across the board. I think the changes that you're going to see from one to the next would be the seeding. If you guys proceed with the seeding in the swales, that's different, obviously from two to three. And then I think the other thing that's worth noting on these numbers is, I know if you're looking, okay, well, the bullets are consistent. Why are my numbers, you know, bumping up? Obviously with more plant material, there's more bed space with more bed space, there's more amended soil and more mulching that gets tied to that. So just keep that in mind, which is why I wanted to show kind of the progression that from concept one to concept three, we're going from 900 plants to 1,400 plants. So just to give you obviously just some estimated totals on those concepts. And you know, obviously depending on where we want to go, those numbers could change, but.
Hey Kristen?
Yes.
Hold on, are you done with your presentation, Ms. Little?
Yes, I am. That is the last slide.
Okay.
Mr. Catalano?
We can open it up for questions. Go ahead, Alderman, Samoski.
Yeah, I, I know, I know we all sit here and we look at monetary values a lot in this city, but something for the deceased and the women and women that serve in this country, don't, you can't really put a price on. Secondly, Ms. Little, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
What are, what is those, in the first, first one you showed by the medallions, I saw the poppies and I saw the other plants. Is that the switchgrass in front or?
So yes, that is going to be the North Wind switchgrass. That's what I'm going to recommend there.
That's the Northwood. So I would recommend that also because it really represents like rice patties also for Vietnam era.
Oh wonderful. I actually didn't know that. I, I love how vertical they are. They remind me of soldiers just because of how vertical they are. That's great. Thank you for sharing that. I did not know that.
Yeah, yeah. Rice grows straight up like that and it grows, it turns, turns brown and this what it's done. So yeah. No, I appreciate it. Every, every concept I've seen, I, I can't, I can't put a finger on it, but if I'm going to do it, I want to make sure everything's, we're all, hopefully we're all on the same page, but very good concepts. I appreciate your time.
No, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Yeah. This is Alderman Catalano. As far as the medallions, I mean, you know, I know there's an empty space there. So are we, are we talking about, there's going to be another space force? Or is that going to happen?
This is Director Lang, Chairman, I can answer that. We had originally left that space and when, when the medallions were approved, Space Force, I don't believe had even become an official branch at that point. We left that space open. We spaced them equally for space for a future medallion or, you know, a prisoner of war medallion or wherever the council sees fit to put in that location.
Because yeah, we got to put something there because it looks kind of odd, just something's missing. So yeah.
Somebody's on my side.
Can I, can I have a question?
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. There's no irrigation system in here to water this stuff?
So we do have an allowance in our concepts for a quick coupler connect. The plant material that I've chosen here is actually of a zero escaping approach, which pretty much just means that after the, the third or fourth year that this plant material is in the ground, it should acclimate and pretty much take care of itself. So I tried to pick low, low maintenance plant material, you know, plant material that's not going to require a lot of water over time. It's going to take care of itself after that. So zero escaping was definitely considered. So quick, we didn't feel the need to do a full-blown irrigation system on this, but locating quick coupler connects where someone could help a hose and then on really, really hot days, hook that hose up, run a sprinkler if necessary. Because after a couple of years, this might become obsolete to you guys when it's all said and done. If this plant material is going to be established and taken care of itself.
Matt, Matt, Matt.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Alright, and then I thought we were talking about putting Beller's lights in there too.
This is Director Lang, I can take that Chairman. Go ahead. That, that was originally included in the lighting bid, which we, the council voted to reject because it was well out of our price range. If Bollards are something that the, the city council wants to look at in the future, we can certainly look at replacing the existing Bollards. But that's not a part of this concept plan. This is mainly focused on the landscaping. The same goes for the, the lighting for the medallions themselves. Staff is working on some options to purchase the fixtures and find a way that's cost feasible to install those separately.
Okay, I have one more.
Okay, one more.
That, that basin that's on the far end, that's behind Veterans Park, that looks like weeds are growing out there. Are we doing anything with that?
Yes. So the concepts that we presented here, there is an allowance as well to have the existing cattails. And I don't want to call them invasives, but the aggressive plant material that's currently in there, to have that stuff removed sprayed. It's a two to three treatment removal, just because they are so aggressive. And then the reintroduction of a new native seed mix into that bed, which would tie to what you guys are currently doing throughout the city and your other storm water management systems. So yes, this, these concepts do look at replacing that existing plant material with something better.
So is that, is that in the, is that in the cost, estimated cost on these projects?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Macina, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. Not sure if you heard me the first time, I got cut off, or the second time I got cut off, but I'll try again. Can, I know there's some great concepts, but is there a rough, there is a lot of things missing like furnishings and electrical and all these things that could definitely, I don't want to use some plate, definitely grow these numbers. Do we have any rough idea of what things like lighting, electrical, furnishings, all that would cost?
This is Director Lang. So we treated the lighting as kind of a separate project. Is this, there is existing lighting out there. There's the Bollards, there's uplighting in the tree wells. We're looking at options to light the medallions from outside of the building. So that is being incorporated separately from the landscaping. I don't have a price for you on that or even a ballpark figure. As I mentioned, we had the advertised for bid for that earlier on and it was well outside of our range. So we decided to move forward with the landscaping to try to get that completed. And then we would focus on the lighting also.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Alderman, I'm sorry, is it the mayor or Alderman Jacob? Go ahead.
And then I. So a couple of things. With the rocks by the catch basins, aren't the rocks going to eventually, isn't the water going to flush the rocks into the catch basin?
No, I'd be recommending a much larger sized rock. It wouldn't be like pea gravel. I'd be recommending like a two to three inch sized rock. So its sole purpose is literally just larger sized debris during, you know, it's just, since we've been having these kind of storms the last couple of summers, it seems, where we're just inundated with water. It's just to assist with if there's mulch that runs down there, if there's litter that's runs down there, it just gives an additional buffer. So those rocks should maintain just outside of your guys' storm, the actual catch basin.
Um, just to add to that, it, it'd be more like a river stone, you know, something that you could grab almost baseball softball size is what we're thinking.
Then I personally, I mean, I, I like concept one and though everything's nice, the only thing I would not want is I would not want that tall grass by the bridge in the middle. To me, it, to me, it just looks like weeds and it's just going to, looks like it's going to get overgrown and.
Peter will have to call code enforcement on you.
Yes, we have to call code enforcement on the public works. Yeah, I'd like to see that clean and open there personally.
I have a. Mayor, go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, I've got a question. So on the poppies, we know what the significance is and whatnot. Do those bloom all year long? Is it red for a week? Is it red for two months, three months? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so they're actually a spring blooming plant. So they're going to come up towards the end of April, early May and be around for just a couple of weeks. And then after they go away, you're just going to have the foliage at the bottom, which is more the green leaves. You're going to have that red early in the spring, which is why some of the taller plant material that's recommended immediately in front of that is what's going to kind of fill. So as, you know, as those poppies come up and fade, you're going to have something in front of it that's going to be coming up at the same time. So there's never going to be a void there, but that's going to be your spring bloom. So, but yes, not all summer.
Okay, I have a couple tones. Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so going back to the North Winds switchgrass that's there. So that's more of that tall grasses like we put in that, what do you want to call it? Swale retention pond in front of the, the wall and the west side of the wall and the east side of the plaza, right? That's where we're going to do the weed and feed or whatever, try and get rid of stuff. Wouldn't it be simpler to just put in some nice hedges or something? It's cleaner. I don't know. When I see these tall grasses, unless you're really taking care of them, they tend to start to take over and look like weeds. And you know, honestly, I don't want it to look like weeds myself. I, I would never have anything looking like weeds at my house and I definitely wouldn't want it at the memorial.
Absolutely. So the plant material that you have currently in the compensatory basin on the east side of the property, which is the west wall that you're speaking of, that's a native, that's, that is an invasive plant material that spreads. It's rhizomus, meaning underground that, that root system is just spreading across whatever space it can. It's whatever ground it can take over. North Wind switchgrass is actually a single spot kind of plant. So it comes up, it stays in one location, it goes right back down. I mean, maybe in eight to 10 years, you may have to go in and, and split them, maybe. But this plant material literally comes up, it stays in its spot and goes right down. So it's a different strain of, of grass than what you're seeing on the east side.
Right, because I'm, I'm thinking just maintenance, right? So our guys are cutting grass or, and now they're going to be trimming and whatnot. I'm thinking if we just had some simple hedge, whether it be one of these small Abervites or whatever, and shape them or the boxwood you got there, the barberry. I mean, they just come in with the trimmer, level it off, make it look nice and clean. I'm, I'm also thinking of the maintenance and the future maintenance, right? And then right in front of it, where those, the evergreens are in the southwest corner, you have, I don't know, it looks like, is that like the little circular things on the end? Is that like stone? And then you're going to, it's going to be a little bed and then the planting in the middle, the planters in the middle or? I'm not sure. It just says seasonal annuals, spring, summer, fall and winter. But what's on the end? Is that brickwork? Is that, is that?
The berm that you're seeing here on the southwest corner, correct?
Yes, what is that? Looks like brickwork.
So, so in the back, you do have a hedge like you're talking about, an evergreen hedge. Those are the circles that kind of look like stars in the back. On either end, you're going to have trees and underneath those are perennials. The seasonal annuals in front is an opportunity for you guys, once again, to do pansies during the summer, to do mums during the fall. That whole bed would be open for you guys to utilize as, as seasonal interest flowers. But no, the, the left and right side is actually just perennials planted underneath that.
Right, because I'm looking at concept one. So when you have the view from Irving Park to the eternal flame over there, you've got, it looks like barberry and I'm not sure what's in between. You got red and green there. I mean, that looks very nice. So I, and it looks clean, right? Something looks easy to maintain. Right, so I'm looking for easy to maintain, clean, clean looking, right? Less maintenance.
Yep, no, absolutely, absolutely.
This is Director Lang, Chairman, if I could chime in on that.
Go ahead.
Kristen did an excellent job of selecting plants that are perennial and low maintenance. The grasses that we were discussing earlier, they're ornamental. They actually can stay up all throughout all three seasons, even through the winter. They're very low maintenance, even less maintenance than, you know, hedges which need to be trimmed once or twice a year. We wouldn't even have to cut those down, maybe once in spring so they can come up fresh. But she did an excellent job of selecting a palette that is taking our maintenance into consideration.
So these little grasses, the switchgrass, I believe you called them, is not going to look anything like that evasive nonsense I see in that other swale, because honestly that, when I see that stuff, I just, oh.
There's a picture of it.
Correct. Yeah, these are ornamental grasses. As Kristen pointed out, the distinction between these and native plantings, these stay much more contained. This is actually, we have, I believe the same species over at the clock tower also.
Right, and, and the clock tower is, looks good all year long, right? And that's what we're looking for here, right? Right now, unfortunately, the pines are getting a little rough and I'm glad. I hope they're gone, but you know, everybody, everybody's got their opinion. Because you know, we've cut them up a little, some, some of them are somewhat in decent shape, but a lot of them are kind of beat up. Then the other thing is, is, so in concept one, we don't do anything in front of the walls of either the existing building to the west or the far back buildings where it looks like, Mike, you said the fort, right? They got the wall there.
Yeah.
I mean.
Do you mind going to the concept one?
There's nothing there in concept one, correct? You're not doing anything there. Is that correct?
Actually, hold on, Alan, do you mind actually going to the plan for concept one, which would be back towards the beginning? Yes, there you go. So yes, I am actually in all three concepts. I'm replacing the east foundation of that existing building and I am replacing the foundation walls along the administrative building and the fort wall, as we've referred to it. So yes, all three concepts replace the plant material on those locations.
Right, so we're going to clean that up. It doesn't look like dead grass. We're going to mulch it. And whatnot. The other question. Um, and whatnot. Uh, the other question is, so as you're walking in, right now, you got that grass. You said you can roll it, brush your hand over the top. I see a lot of flowers, the, the pinks and the yellows and stuff like that. Uh, I mean, I, I like the hostas. I think that'll look nice under there and under the trees. But on the, on the right side of the sidewalk, those, those flowers, those are perennials, so they come up every year. Is there a lot of maintenance there? I, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, no, you're fine. So let me talk, so we're looking at that, uh, this is probably the best visual for that. So I'm gonna start all the way in the back with that kind of dark purple color. That's just shrubs. So those come up. Maintenance on those might be you trimming them up a little bit as they get kind of out of, you know, uncapped or however you wanna prune them if you guys want them more clean. I like the natural look, so they're a little more fuzzy looking. Stair stepping down to the yellow, that's black eyed Susans. Black eyed Susans come up every single year. Um, there's little to no maintenance on them. They do not require staking. They do not require deadheading. They come up, uh, start, starting, starting in the early spring, they're gonna bloom almost until fall. You can leave them up during the winter months. They're pretty much gonna flop. So the extent of maintenance is in the spring when you're out there doing a leaf cleanup. You're raking up that debris. Um, so that's the extent on those. Same thing with the pink that you're seeing in front, that sedum comes up every single year. Zero requi- and zero maintenance during the su- the summer months. They are a drop tolerant plant. They pretty much love to be left alone. Um, same thing with those. I recommend leaving those up all year round. When those are covered in snow, it's super, super fantastic. Cause those flowers are actually very flat on top. Um, so they get covered with snow. They brown out. Very, very interesting architecture during the winter months. Once again, that's gonna be your guys coming in. They can come in with a, a trimmer. And just go across the, the ground plane, cut them to the ground. They start right back over and that's all you're gonna have to do on them. So pretty much all the plant material that you're seeing here is that in the spring, you're gonna come in, you're gonna rake it up. Or you're just gonna hack it down and that's pretty much your maintenance.
Tony, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Around the monument, the freedom, right, the stone. You're, we're gonna clean up and naturally that we've got some planting where we can change all year round, right? In the front and in the back is more of what we saw along the sidewalk. Is that what's happening? Or I didn't really see a photo behind the, behind the monument.
So the looking, if you're looking at the monument from Irving Park where it actually says freedom on the front. I, all I've really done is replace the existing juniper that you have and the roses that you have. I've swapped that for boxwoods and then I've introduced barberry in the front. So the whole front section is going to be, and I know you're not seeing it here. I'm just trying to describe it, but the whole front section where it says freedom is gonna be all shrubs. So little to no maintenance. Pretty much the boxwoods is whenever you need to trim those or shape those is when you guys, that's to your discretion, of course. Um, everything else here is pretty much everything I described from the bridge view that we just went through. That continuation happens all the way around. So same plant material, same maintenance requirements.
So, but see, this photo is in concept two. I didn't see anything in concept one. I'm just curious. Is that what? Is that what we're getting in concept one or is, or? Okay, so, okay, I, that's what I was trying to get at.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Let's get Alderman Woods and I will go right to you, Mike. Come on, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. A few different questions, uh, trying to. Uh, one, I, I have some issues because I'm a tree guy, so I, I fight to eliminate trees, although I know some are dead. Uh, I have some issues with the quiet, contained, tranquil space versus the vignette approach. Where you can view this thing at sixty miles an hour. I exaggerate a little bit, but how does, so when I look at some of the views you're showing. I see some, uh, so I, I don't know how to call this out, concept. One Plaza Landscape Buffer, my page fourteen or packet page twenty-three. You, you know, which, the, the one you, you just talked about where you called out the, the different plants, the black eyed Susans, the acedums.
Yes.
Right? That one where you see the silhouette guy rubbing the.
From the, from the west.
Yeah, so, uh, in some of the views that I'm looking, it looks that truck that's in the. In the, in the view there is being covered up in some views that looks like by arborvitae's or, or something. And then, so is that truly in the view or is that put in there to screen the truck?
So your question is. Is, your question is in the back. So we've got this view that you're seeing here. Are you asking, is this actually what it would look like height wise? And in kind of creating that sense of enclosure, is that your question? Is, as far as the plant material?
Right, so it's, right, so the, the, the pictures are all beautiful. The issue is that they all are from one view and so you can't see all the other angles, right? So I don't see any angle for what the, once we get off view of the emblem wall. What does the corner of the parking lot look like? So we're moving down the trees. And in some of the pictures, I can see the overhang of the tree and the foreground. Is that tree actually there or was that left? In a purpose, does it actually exist? You know, it would almost be helpful if there was a, a colored overview to see the scale completely. And how the, the site interacts as opposed to the snapshot views, which all look good. I just can't, I just can't tell what some of the out of frame areas are gonna look like. And with the loss of trees, the reduction of scale, uh, reduction of sense of space. Um, I just can't tell what that really, how that works.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, so, um, so probably this plan in particular is probably helpful. Because it does show the plants or trees specifically, like you're asking, what trees we're recommending to keep. Trees that you're seeing here, obviously that have a P over them on this plan. So like on the far left hand side, immediately behind the berm, you're seeing those three Ps. Those are trees that we're looking to preserve within, within the space. So like, for instance, the view that you're seeing, looking at the medallion wall and you've got that tree canopy that's kind of peeking over, that tree will be remaining. So that is a great replica, replica of what that's actually gonna be. Um, Alan, if we go to the view out for concept one, looking towards the, on the bridge, looking to, like up the swale to the north, if you don't mind. Thank you. You've been wonderful, by the way. Perfect. So obviously the, all the trees here are existing. These are your trees. The only thing that we've added are the trees in the back, uh, the two additional crab apples to the line on the west in this picture, the left hand side. The trees in the back are all of your existing trees. Um, I mean, I think to your point, uh, Mr. Woods. I think the most difficult perspective here is, is the one that we were just talking about. Uh, if we go to the next slide, Alan. Uh, yes, like this is, this is difficult, right? Because you, you're so used to seeing what you're seeing in the bottom right hand corner with all those evergreens there. And so now I'm intro- I'm showing you guys the trees in the back are your existing maples. And then I'm introducing new, new crab, crab apples to the foreground, which is the two trees in the front. So what, you know, I, I understand your question and, and yes, that is, that is the difficult part of when you're picking perspectives to do overlays on. And then what's the rest look like? I completely understand. Um, and to your point, you know, if we, when we pick a concept, maybe some of those views, if you feel that it's necessary. We can kind of visit those and talk about them more if there's a concept that we, we kind of zero in on tonight.
Right, I, I mean, I don't know that we're gonna cover my concerns or, or be able to show that. I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward. We've discussed this, uh. Uh, I won't say ad nauseam for four years or five years now. On, you know, entertain multiple plans with lighting, without lighting, medallions, nobelion, medallions. We've now started to piecemeal it together, kind of, right? And I just wanna do it right. I mean, there would be, I, I would probably do some things differently, but I, I do like the plan. Uh, I just like a more enclosed or more framed structure. This to me seems a little more open. I'm not gonna, not gonna fight seven other people if they, they want it open. I, I, you know, that's personal opinion. I'm just worried about some of the other views that I can't see, so.
No, absolutely.
That was just a comment.
Absolutely, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Alderman, Mr. Mosky?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, right on with Alderman Jacob, uh, kinda stuck on concept two, but without the. Like the open grass that he said in between those trees on the swale. Uh, there's not much difference between two and one, correct? Except for the pricing.
Yeah, Alan, do you mind going back to the yellow highlighted plan? So yes, on this plan, what you would be eliminating for your point is just the highlight on the swale. I would keep the framing. So on this plan, um, you know, the plant material that's happening behind or closest to Irving Park Road. I would keep that to keep that frame and then the swale would just be framed in, in a sense. Um, that's, you know, that doesn't make or break this plan, in my opinion, is we're just, we're, we're omitting the plant material that's in the swale. And it's exactly what's currently happening there. So.
Yeah, I was just thinking of somebody wants to go sit down in the grass or something in between the trees without having something obstructing them.
Yeah.
Instead of sitting on a bench or sitting, wanting to go reflect somewhere else, sit in the tree area with grass. Um, I like the fact that it comes out to the street and it has an entrance welcoming you from the street and from, so you don't have to walk from the other side. But, uh, like I said, Art and, and some of the guys have different opinions, so, uh, I do like the switchgrass though. The tall maintained switchgrass in front, like you said, is resembles really rice paddy. So I'd like to see that, make sure that stays in. Uh, other than that, no, it's great drawings, great concepts.
So Alderman, uh, Jacob, did you have, um, did you make a motion or?
Well, I just, um, a couple more questions or comments.
Go ahead.
Um, I mean, I like the poppies and. I, I mean, the, there's definitely meaning for them, but. They, you said they only, they're only gonna be there for like two weeks. I mean, is there another red flower or something that could be there? Like longer? Cause for two weeks, I, I mean, it's, you're not really gonna see that red. It's just a very short time, it sounds like.
Chair, Chairman Catalano, can I speak, um, to that, to that point? Alan, can you, can you show the, uh, the concept or the, um, the rendering coming in from the west parking lot? As you're walking over the bridge, the silhouette with the handout? And this will address a, a comment that the mayor had as well. Um, Kristen and I also talked about, you know, the, the length of the poppy bloom. Um, the point of the poppy is it, it has a lot of significance to veterans. And the one that she chose under the medallions, I, if I remember correctly, it's thirty-six to forty-two inches. And it's, it's short-lived for the bloom, but it's right around Memorial Day. So there's, there's some rhyme and reason behind it. But if you notice coming in, um, when you come across the bridge and some of the planting areas. There's some, um, bare areas adjacent to the sidewalk before the plant material starts. And that's, that's where you get, you know, your, your annual plantings. And, and I'm not, I can't remember, but Kristen and I spoke to other varieties of poppy. And there's other varieties of poppy that are much more, I'm not gonna say ground cover. But that's another way to introduce poppy in and have it almost like you're walking through the field of it. Cause you could dress up some of those bare areas and, and Kristen can speak to that a little bit, uh, further. Um, mayor, with the tree wells and, and you said you liked the hostas. Um, one thing that's not really discernible is that Kristen also was, is talking about. Somewhat mounting that a little bit to create a sense of, of height and depth. Um, but, but with the plant materials. So there's, there'll be hostas that get bigger and have taller flower, uh, spikes. And those are gonna be closer to the trees. And then there's, it'll kind of come grading down, if you will, towards the, the, the framing wall. And then the last thing I was gonna say was, um, the sidewalk and the potential bridge connection. To that back administrative parking lot, the thought process there was. I don't know if y'all do VIP parking for your events or, you know, parking more so for those that. Uh, it's difficult to walk, so you wanna get them closer, you know, so if you had some type of VIP veterans or older veterans. You use that parking lot for them and then they don't have to be willed around or walk around the whole area. You use that new, uh, connective pedestrian, uh, bridge and sidewalk to come into the, uh, plaza.
Mr. Catalano?
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, uh, we adapt, we adopt, uh, number two with minus the, uh. Minus the, uh, boxton, the, the grass area, where the trees are there? I'm not sure what that's called. It's not a swale, what was it called?
Yeah, we've been referring to it as a swale planting.
Okay, yeah, the swale planting.
So when you talk about minus, what would be the difference then?
What, I'm sorry, great. Second, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't, I, the picture she's showing right now, I think that was only in, oh, it is in concert, I'm sorry. I thought it was. It's still open in concept two, okay. I thought there was other, let's see, wild grass. I like it, like, without the grass. You know, without the, uh, what do you call it there? What, you had two.
The native plantings. We have it with and without.
Yeah, I'd rather see without, like you said, that area, like, somebody wants to go sit down or, like you said, lunch, they wanna sit on the grass. Not a bench, they can sit over there, they can do it, you know, you can walk around. You're not, you're not limited to where you can and can't go, like Mr. Woods was saying too before.
Mr. Woods, you had a question?
Yeah, one follow-up. So can we go back to the view we were looking at, the silhouette, the, the guy walking down the sidewalk, Irving Park?
It's rhyme walking.
There you go. I wanted to ask this before, but I forgot. So if you look at that view compared to the lower right-hand picture, which is the existing. What happened to the rock, the water lines, the electric lines, the, the meter and all the other things that are there? Does that disappear or does that get blended into your landscape picture here, but it's just not shown?
I, I can take that one, Chairman. The staff has, uh, already created a ticket with ComEd to lower the meter to a, a shorter profile meter. Uh, underneath that rock, I believe is a backflow device that could potentially be relocated or removed in-house. Uh, there's also a NiCor gas meter in that area. However, those two are specifically already loaded to ground. And would be easily screened by the plantings that you see here.
Right, I, I just didn't want any surprises, cause at the corner of Wooddale and Irving, the clock tower. You know, we, we always look at the pictures and, and people forget to put those big silver boxes into the picture, right? I just don't wanna lose sight of the fact that those exist.
Uh, Alderman Catalano, it's, it's one, Alderman Woods, it's one of the first things that we noticed when we came out into that grove of trees. Uh, it's just a, it's an electric meter and why they mounted it so high is, is kind of bizarre. Cause it's as tall or taller than I am and it's an eyesore. So it needs to be at the very minimum lowered. And it seems like that's very feasible and or moved. One of the other things that we noted, which we know is a, a cost stopper, is the ComEd lines, the aerial lines in the parkway. But it's something that you can do downstream, kinda like you buried the lines along Irving at the intersection of Wooddale and Irving. You know, if you ever wanted to do that in the future, that was something else. And it's on one of the first couple of slides we note. You know, long-term, if you wanted to really open that up and take people's eyes off the telephone poles and the, and the ComEd wires. That's another, uh, feature that we looked at. It's, it's just an, it's, it's a note on one of the first couple of slides, so.
Okay, but in, in closing, just so we're, just so we're clear, none of those costs are in the cost for this, these plans. Moving, relocating, lowering, whatever needs to be done with those three items are gonna be, uh.
That's correct. We have those noted as cost by others or, or work by others. Cause we don't know if you're gonna do it or not or table it to some time downstream or what have you.
Well, it looked kinda silly, that gas meter or electric meter popping out of those, uh, black eyed Susans, if that's what they're called. Or the middle of the acedums, uh, and that, that, I'll get past the trees, but that would make me upset if I saw that.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead. Alderman Jacob?
Um, what, uh, with this picture, uh, I'm, I'm not. What, with this picture, I'm, I'm not, personally, I'm not really too fond of the grass or the, whatever that tall grass is that he's touching when he comes in. And that, where the guy's touching, right, where Ron's touching over there.
That sounds inappropriate.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I kind of like what we have on the first picture in, in front of the, where they're like the tall, the ones we talked about that are individual, I think, personally, I think those are there.
Switchgrass.
The switchgrass. And then my only other comment was, I, I know we talked crab apple trees. Where are those going to be located? We're not going to have apples all over the place and they're making mess, are we?
No, I'm just trying to match the existing tree line that you have around your plaza space, which my notes had that they were crab apples. I might be incorrect on that. But.
They are crab apples.
Okay, that's what I thought. So every tree that I'm introducing, like the ones that are on that picture to the right-hand side, those would be matching the existing crab apples that are on site so that there's not any sort of change. Your ornamentals will be consistent around the whole plaza.
Mr. Catalano?
Yeah, so Alderman Sizmarski, go ahead.
Yeah, I, just to go back to Ron saying about the, somebody mentioned something about the electric line stuff, I, I wouldn't even worry about that at this moment because we've already got on the books. We've got the 5G concept for town along with a utility, whatever may happen in the future with a utility easement or utility pipe for the city. So I mean, we could very easily integrate that and not have to worry about that later, at a later date.
Okay.
And I also do have a motion for number two.
Okay, so we've got a motion for number two.
Mayor, I think Mayor had something for you.
Question.
Go ahead.
You're making a motion for number two. And I'm trying to see the difference and, you know, to see differences, nine hundred plants, eleven hundred plants. And then over the bridge, when you're overlooking the bridge, that's going to be just grass, right? It's not going to be this.
Yeah, I made a motion for number two, which is grass, not the wild, like, like Alderman Jacob said, just the regular grass on the swell, just not, not the tall, wild, wild stuff.
So we could go to.
What two brings in the street, brings the plants out to the street.
And the frame in the back. So everything yellow, so everything yellow highlighted, here's the additions. And then if you just, you would just eliminate the swell highlight, that's it.
Right.
Not to confuse the situation further, but if the council wanted to approve Concept One with those two additional framing locations on the southern and northern ends around the, the existing plaza, I'm sure that would be possible also.
I'm sorry, I'm not saying that.
Go ahead.
No, I'm not saying anything. I'm sorry.
Hi. Tony.
Yeah.
So what, Alderman, Mr. Lang just said, so in the southwest corner, is that the same as Concept One or was there something different going on in Concept One? And Concept Two, is it something different than Concept One, southwest corner where the pine trees are right now?
Yes. Sorry, Chris.
Go ahead. No, no, you go right ahead. I'm sorry.
So Concept One has a, a raised berm in that location with some perennial plantings. And Concept Two eliminates that berm and just has turf grass. So if you look at the slide with the highlighted differential areas between Concept One and Two, you'll see in that southwest corner that it calls out that that, that berm is removed.
So basically in Concept Two, we're pushing some bushes back a little farther, closer to the building next to the switchgrass versus having it up front.
Honestly, if we're going to plant annuals and put some color, just like we're doing at the clock tower, that's where you're going to get the most, where people are going to notice it more up front than in the back. I don't know. And then in the back of the memorial area over there, the three trees that are in yellow in the back, I don't understand what those are. Those are there and then, then you're making them yellow. What is actually happening there?
So I'm just introducing a planting bed and those trees get incorporated into that planting bed. So there will be more of the same flowers and, and perennials and shrubs that you're seeing towards Irving Park Road, framing that back corner.
Oh, okay. So that's what that is. Okay. I would just, I'm like, the trees are there, I see them in yellow and I'm not sure. So that's where we're going to go through extra.
Yes.
And I, I'm kind of, I would rather see the stuff up front, maybe in one than two, but whatever.
So, so.
I amended Tony. I'll amend it to, yeah, I'll change the motion to Concept One with those additions, though.
Okay.
What? Just clarify, Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
Concept One then, including the additional planting beds on the southern end near Irving Park Road and also the one on the northern end framing the, the existing plaza, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's your motion?
My motion for Concept One plus addition, two additions.
My second.
A second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Nope.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries.
I'd like to thank Ms. Little, if you don't mind. Being a veteran, it makes a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, does touch that, so. And I'm sure it'll help the families out, too. I appreciate your time and effort.
Presentation.
Yes, thank you guys so much for having me.
Thank you.
Alderman Catalano, may I make one, one comment too? I just, it's a clarification. I know y'all have passed everything. And just with the Concept and Two, had, had you removed the plantings from that berm in the southwest, the berm would have remained. It would, we can't change the topography there. It would have just, it would have been without the flowers and the, and the bushes and the annuals or perennials. So just a point of clarification, sorry.
So can, before we close, can anybody tell me what we passed now?
I am hopeful. Here. Let, let me, can I take a stab at it? I want to make sure. So Concept One, as is, plus the, to the southern, where the sidewalk, from the memorial to the sidewalk to Irving Park Road, you're going to extend that piece. And then you're going to, and then there's going to be the bed in the back northeast corner where those three trees are. That was my understanding. Did I get, is that, is that what we're getting?
Actually, may I, really quick? Alan, can you please go to Concept One? I'm going to see if I can actually draw this on here so visually everyone sees what we, what was my understanding. Because I think.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, can you go to the full screen for me? Perfect. So my understanding is this is our concept. We're going to add this bed back here. Mind my drawing. I am not going to do this very, very well. We're going to add that. And then this bed is going to carry out like this from Concept One. And then that would be your plan.
Exactly. That's.
Yes.
That's what I understood. Is that what it is? That's what it is?
That's what it is, sir.
Okay.
So we added that. Why didn't we just do Concept Three, which gave you that? And then soften that parking lot corner and, and beefed up the planting in front of, that some better framing of the medallions in front where those two berms are, the location for the future cannon. So I wasn't, not against doing the plan. I just, as we're adding those pieces together, we're almost to three. Why don't we just do three and get it over?
Mr. Catalano?
Go ahead.
Well, that, that was my intention of saying that in the beginning. There, there is no, I mean, we're sitting there setting a cost on family members.
And this, this. Because this addresses.
I, I, I had nothing. I'm, I was just trying to appease both part. I mean, you just said it yourself, seven different votes. Okay, where, where can I go in the middle? I've been trying to do this along with other residents in the neighborhood. I've been asking, a lot of people have been asking, Miss Bedard, one of them, and we haven't done anything. It was a hard, hard enough task just to get it unfunded. Now we're trying to fight to get it funded. And everybody wants to, you know, like you said, everybody has their own concept. So that's why I made my statement. That I said, there's no cost to, to human life or to deceased life, so.
The, the reason for three is it balances the site a little better, helps add some more interest and, and quiet down the parking lot area, right? Adds another layer in the front where that berm is at, where we're taking out those trees. Does a better job of making it less vignette-like because there's layers of plant material instead of just straight lines of plant material, right? So you've got the plant material in front, different size and scales, you've got some trees, then you've got the next layer of some plantings in front of the sidewalk. And then after the sidewalk, right? So adding those pieces in, I think really helps that side, side out. I mean, I, again, I, I, I like it a little more secluded. But that being said, I think this fills out the site a little better and will help achieve at least what I believe it should be. And again, we've talked about it for years. By the time you add this to number one, what are we talking? Twenty thousand dollars?
So can the motion be amended?
No.
No, I'd have to re amend the motion to take on number three, Concept Three.
No, I don't think you can because it was already voted on. The prevailing side could make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion then.
To go to option three or Concept Plant.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make that to remove.
One second, one second. In Concept Three, so on the far west end, I see that bed of flowers has comes out around the, the curb and the sidewalk. Are we getting rid of another tree? Is that what happened there?
No, no, the trees are, the trees stay. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
It looks like it's gone in this Concept Three. The biggest, the biggest tree is gone, it looks like. And the two smaller ones remain. Am I, am I looking at that wrong?
No, I'm drawing. No, all the, all three trees and all three concepts are the same here. I just highlighted this one in the corner.
Okay, that's the one, the one that's in the corner, the biggest one that you see in Concept One, I don't see it anymore in Concept Three.
All three trees that are in Concept, so the tree, the trees that are being proposed to, to remain is consistent across all Concept. I, I just added a tree overlay here because it got lost a little bit in that planting bed.
I'm good. I'm sorry. I just didn't see it here. And I'm like, we losing another big tree. And that was, I think, our best.
Yeah, we're, we're not losing any trees. And this helps, these planting beds help tie this all together and frame it a little better.
Alderman Catalano?
Go ahead.
So Mayor, what would I have to do? Strike down the last vote? As the prevailing side?
I haven't done this in a while. I think being on the prevailing side, motion to reconsider changing Concept, to Concept Three, that, that's what it is. But you're on the prevailing side.
I'll make, huh? Yes, I'm making a motion to reconsider and go with Concept Three.
Does the secondary agree?
Well, it could be another secondary. This is a whole new motion.
It's on the motion, correct.
I'll make the motion then.
And Alderman, this is Director Lang. Just to clarify, that is Concept Three without the, the native plantings in the swell areas, correct?
Correct, correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on that, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Absolutely.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Let's get it done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will you guys be out there tomorrow?
Oh, tonight.
But tonight.
All right. I'll bring the flashlight. I'll watch.
Okay, next is an agreement between the City of Wooddale and H.R. Green for the professional services for the Veterans Memorial Landscape and Project, not to exceed in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions on the motion?
Nope.
If they are none, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods? Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Eugene, there.
Wake up Eugene. Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next is approval of a three-year contract with the Street Sweep-In Program with LRS Clean Sweep, Inc. in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand. That is my motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? If they are none, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
And motion carries. And last is approval of a change order number two for the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for the year, fiscal year ending two thousand and twenty-two for capital road, a program in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
I have, Alderman Catalano, I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
It seems like we're not adding that big of a street, seems like we're adding a lot of money for not that big of a area. I mean, how are they pricing this?
I can take that, Chairman. Go ahead. So the reason for the, why it may seem disparate for the area is that Elmwood Avenue is going to require reconstruction as opposed to resurfacing, which takes into account a considerable more factors than a simple resurfacing project.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please. If there are no, no other questions?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
And the motion carries. And next items to be considered at future meetings, we have Public Works vehicle purchased February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And we have Williams Architect for the Public Works new facility. That's February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And then the last is Illinois governmental agreement, the tollway march. This coming March two thousand and twenty-one. Any other items to consider for future meetings?
I make a motion adjourned.
Okay, if there is none, we're making a motion to adjourn. All in favor, I mean, roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call the finance, call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Next, uh, I'll entertain a movement, uh, motion to approve the meeting minutes of January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So.
For motion, we have a second, any corrections? Questions, there being none, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
That passes. Next, uh, report and recommendations. I M R F E R I, Early Retirement Incentive. Uh, who's gonna take this, Mr. Wilson? Are you gonna?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, admittedly, I'm only gonna take it for a minute or two. Um, we have, uh, on the. Call with us tonight, uh, Brian Glover and Kate Setchell from I M R F. Uh, they are far more versed in this topic than I am. I know enough to be dangerous. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Glover, uh, do a presentation. Uh, I know he's, uh, got that, uh, ready to go, so, um. Jeff, you could turn over to Brian, and then Brian, um, presuming the chairman's okay with it, uh, let you, uh, kick it off, uh.
Sure, go ahead, Brian.
Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good evening, guys. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Fantastic. On call, uh, as she was unable to join the meeting on camera is Kate Settle, the manager of Field Services. We're going to try to make this short and sweet. Um, I ran a cost study for the city of Wooddale. There are currently. Nine eligible employees who are eligible for the I M R F E R and. Uh, will be able to entertain questions after the presentation. So, here we go. What is I M R F Early Retirement Incentive? So it's an. E R I program that is an employer optional program. This program allows eligible employees to purchase between one month up to five years of additional service credit. It goes towards their age or service. Eligible employees can retire within the designated one-year window and one day in length and purchase additional service. The city of Wooddale have, has elected to have May first of two thousand and twenty-one as the beginning of that one-year window. Uh, I M R F pension benefits are based on service earnings earned and purchased. In order to be eligible to participate in I M F E R I, uh, employees must be. And a participant of I M R F and employed by the city of Wooddale through the E R I window. Uh, they must be at least fifty years of age with twenty years of service. If they are accept and approve the E R I, they must leave employment. And retire during the twelve-month and one-day window that the E R I incentive is being offered. Member benefits of E R I. I M R F is considered a defined benefit plan. We're four oh one A plan. That means that your benefits are based on a formula. With I M R F is your age at retirement. Your years of service and your earnings. That's the formula that we use to calculate your, your monthly pension benefit. So with E R I, again, you're allowed to purchase up to one month, up to five years of service. That service can go towards your age to get you to age fifty-five if you're tier one. Or to get you more years of service that will enhance your pension. Uh, effective January first of two thousand and twenty-one. Reciprocal service cannot be used to meet the twenty-year service eligibility requirement. With the cost study that I ran for the city of Wooddale, there are no members that are eligible with reciprocal service. So this is not applicable to this particular cost study, but this new ruling was effective January first of two thousand and twenty-one. In addition. All eligible members must meet the age requirement of the reciprocal. Without any enhanced E R I service or age purchase. Now, to qualify and to let I M R F know that you are intending to retire under E R I, there are two forms. The first form is the five twenty-one form, which is the intent to retire under E R I. It may be filled out at any time, but no later than when you file for your application of retirement, which is I M R F Form five twenty. The five twenty-one form must be mailed or faxed to I M R F. And once received, it does not guarantee eligibility of a pension or the E R I incentive. Once I M R F receives the five twenty-one notice of intent, we acknowledge, uh, by both a letter to the. Uh, employee and to the employer. We also suggest that you file as soon as you decide that you will retire under your employer's E R I incentive. Next, we're going to briefly go, uh, into the cost of how the member is going to be paying for their E R I incentive. So in order to calculate the cost of a member's E R I purchase. I M R F looks for the, the highest twelve consecutive months of that member's salary for each year. Multiply that four and a half by four and a half percent. For each year or fraction of a year of E R I service purchase. To put that in perspective, I have, uh, an example. So we have a regular tier one member. Their highest twelve months of salary is twenty-seven thousand dollars. We multiply that for, by four and a half percent. Uh, for each year by four and a half percent, that's one thousand two hundred. Fifteen dollars. And if they were to purchase three years and seven months of E R I. That member's E R I cost would be three thousand. Uh, I'm sorry, four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. If they were to purchase five years of E R I, the member's cost will be six thousand seventy-five dollars. Okay, so in order to determine what a member's cost for their E R I service will be. They are encouraged to call I M R F Member Services to request an E R I estimate. That phone number is listed on the screen. It's one eight hundred. Two seven five four six seven three. There will be a reduction, uh, in the actual percentage multiplier if the employee does not have an eligible spouse. It is reduced to three point seven five percent instead of four point five percent. So now we'll discuss how a member will pay for their purchase of E R I service. So any payouts of sick vacation and personal time that the employee would normally pay to the member at retirement time. Must be forfeited and applied toward the member's cost of the E R I purchase. A member or employee can use rollover funds from a tax-deferred account for that purchase, such as from an IRA. Four oh three B, four fifty-seven, or four oh one K plan. Again, these are all tax-deferred accounts that they can actually make. Uh, use of to make the purchase for their E R I. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, if a member does not have a surviving spouse at retirement time. They are generally given a refund. They can use that refund of those surviving spouse contributions to make that purchase for their E R I. After that, any remaining balance, payments are, are going to be made directly by the member. And if they choose to, we can provide what we like to call an interest-free loan. Where those payments are divided over twenty-four months and is the interest-free, uh, payment. So. In order to determine the cost, you're going to request a pension estimate, which we will need to know your retirement date. Uh, the amount of any unused unpaid sick days or vacation days that you anticipate. And the number of E R I months or years of service you wish, wish to purchase. And E R I does not change our basic pension formula. So for instance. For a tier one member who is fifty years of age and they buy five years of E R I service to reach age fifty-five. Which is the earliest that they can retire under tier one. If the member does not have at least thirty-five years of service credit, there will still be a quarter of a percent reduction. In their monthly pension amount for every month they are shy of either age sixty or having thirty-five years of service. So just because you purchased the E R I, our standard pension formula still does apply. Now, in regards to death benefits. Uh, in, if the eligible spouse is to receive a surviving spouse pension, that still is applicable if they purchase E R I. And if a member passes away before their E R I balance is paid. The remaining balance for that cost will be deducted from any death benefits. Next topic is pretty cut and dry. If you do accept and take, partake of the E R I incentive, you are only allowed to go, go to back to work after retirement. For non-I M R F employers. You can only retire under the E R I incentive once. And never, ever, ever work for an I M R F employer again in any capacity. If you do, you'll lose all of the E R I enhancements of your pension. And you will need to pay I M R F back the difference between the E R I pension. And the pension you would have received without the E R I incentive. Now, uh, some of the steps to retire under I M R F E R I. Number one, uh, the employer contacts me, a field service representative reports a cost study, which I provided for you today. And you consider that cost study, you then, once you decide to pass it, you pass a resolution. Adopting the E R I incentive, and it's up to the employer to inform all eligible employees that it's not up to I M R F. Once the employees have been notified, we require that they read our member E R I booklet. And then, uh, proceed with the steps that are listed in the back of that booklet. Once they've decided, again, they do need to complete and submit to I M R F Form five twenty-one, which is the notice of intent to retire under E R I. Once we've received that notice of intent, we notify the employee that we've received it as well as the city of Wooddale. Now, one of the final steps, well, to continue with the steps. The employer determines the retirement date for all the eligible members, so the employer has that leeway. To stagger those retirement dates for eligible members, so not everyone's retiring all at once. Uh, you will also need to call us again to request an estimate with any kind of payouts. That, that you may have that can be applied towards your E R I purchase. And, uh, final step for the member is that they need to apply for their pension. No later than thirty days prior to their last day of work, but no sooner than six months ahead. Once the employer has been notified that the member is accepting the E R I incentive, the employer needs to file. A formal termination online. Once that, uh, termination is completed, I M R F pays an estimated E R I pension immediately to the member. After that, the employer sends us all the final payroll, then another revision and calculation is done to make those adjustments. Uh, for the E R I incentive. After the final earnings and, uh, credits are reported by the employer and they're received and processed. If the member is eligible for an optional pension, they receive an optional pension letter. If they have voluntary additional contributions, which is a separate savings vehicle they would offer at I M R F, they receive that optional letter. And if they don't have an eligible spouse at retirement time, they receive that surviving spouse refund letter. Once all of this has been received and completed, we mail the final invoice for each individual employee who participated in the E R I window. We mail the, and invoice to the employer. Uh, the city of Wooddale would forward us any payouts that that employee would have received for sick time, vacation. Bonuses or severance pay that all comes to us. If there's a balance that exists after those payouts are received, then the member will receive an invoice. An employer can, however, choose to pay for that member's cost of their E R I. That is a separate form that needs to be completed, so if the city of Wooddale decides that they want to pay for their member's cost, that is an option as well. However, if there's any member balance remaining after that, um, member then, the member then can make any after-tax. Uh, I'm sorry, pre-tax member payments from a four oh one K, uh, IRA or four fifty-seven plan. Any remaining balance after that, it is up to the members to pay us, uh, and they can choose to pay up until a twenty-four-month installment plan. Which is, uh, interest-free. Their I M R F pension based on E R I is direct deposited. The first month following termination. So if I terminated today. My pension will be effective February first, and if I retired under E R I, I would receive my first benefit payment in the middle of February. So that was short and sweet. I know you guys have the actual E R I cost study. Uh, if you have any questions on the employer process, now would be the time to ask, and thank you so much again for inviting us to attend your board meeting.
I have a question.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mayor, please.
You said we only have nine employees that are eligible, because I thought it was fifteen.
No. The original cost study was a preliminary study. I've taken a deeper dive and done a manual audit. And determined that there were only, uh, nine eligible employees. I think I sent that to Brad, the revision on Monday.
Okay.
Hey, Brian, actually, it's thirteen. It was originally fifteen that were eligible.
Thirteen, yep. It is, I'm sorry, thank you, Kate. It is thirteen. It was originally fifteen, you're right.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, could I shine on for a second?
Mr., Director Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so it was, um. A higher number and then a couple of people, um, did get removed for various reasons. And then there's nine people that could retire just straight away on their own right now. And then the additional four to get to thirteen are ones that can retire solely based upon the E R I, so. There's a couple of different groupings in there, so the total number after you, all the adjustments is thirteen, but. There is a group of nine, then there's a group of four, then there were a couple that were taken out, so.
Right, can I ask?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My question is, is that counting police officers too, or is that a separate one?
No, that's strictly for regular tier one and tier two members.
So that's Public Works and Building Department, not the police?
Correct.
Are there any other questions?
Alderman Woods.
Sure, Alderman Sizmarsky, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's a question on this. I, I, I understand it all. Uh, Alderman Sorrentino is waiting to be let back into the meeting, just so you know. Oh, he's in, I'm sorry. Sorry to bother.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome back, Sonny.
Thank you.
Can, uh, uh, so I have a question. Can you speak to? Uh, we broke up the number of, uh, eligible people, or thirteen, nine of who could retire today without the E R I. Um, and the other four, I guess, need the E R I to retire. Why would we offer the E R I to people who could already retire when that just builds up their years of service?
Kate, would you like to answer that?
Kate?
Yes, sorry, I had done it myself. Uh, my name's Kate. I'm the manager of Field Services. Actually, prior to Brian, I was, uh, Field Rep for the city of Wooddale. Um, so the nine people can just retire on their own. Um, they don't need age or service to be eligible. Um, by purchasing up to five years of age and service, it's gonna make them, under this program, look as if they've worked five years longer, so it's enhancing their pension. That's the, the title, Early Retirement Incentive. The other four actually need to buy the five years of age of service, perhaps they're age fifty. They're buying five years of age to be age-eligible to retire, to get to that age fifty-five minimum, uh, to be eligible.
Okay, thank you. Are there, uh, any other questions? Mayor, please, go ahead.
So nine people basically have thirty years already in, and they can go, get up to thirty-five, or it could be?
They currently have twenty years already, so they're eligible based on twenty years of service and being, uh, age fifty at least.
Okay. So it's not like they're fifty-five and they can get another five years.
Yes, actually, they.
Kate, where are you gonna take that?
Yes, so, um, uh, the nine people are already age fifty-five and have enough, have twenty years of service, so they're buying five years of age and service. Purely to enhance their pension. The other four. The other four are need to purchase service just to be age eligible.
And and what is the max? Is it thirty-five years is where you max out on your pension or?
It's forty years.
Oh, it's forty years, yeah.
So the the benefit of this program is basically you can have older staff retire for to have a cost savings for the city. If you were to hire people back in those positions, that eighty percent of the salary of the person who retired, you'd be lowering your public wage base. Or if you eliminated those positions, then you would be saving money. So the benefit of E R I is to shift out people that are nearing retirement anyway and then hire perhaps younger or a lower salaried staff to replace them.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Alderman Catalano, go ahead.
How does that affect elected officials? Do they have the same?
So you, sir, have service with I M R F, but you do not have twenty years of service with I M R F? The bulk of your service is with the, another pension system?
Yes.
Because you have worked for both of them at the same time, they cannot be added together to make you eligible for E R I. So had you worked with the other system and stopped with that system, in other words, you were no longer working there and then started your elected official position, then they could be added together to allow you to retire under E R I. But because you're doing both of them at the same time, the service does not add together, it's called concurrent service. And so it makes you ineligible for this program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair.
Are there any other questions?
No, sir.
Are there being none? Thank you, Mr. Glover and Kate, for the presentation.
Thank you for having us. Please don't hesitate to reach out to either one of us with any additional questions or concerns. Thank you for your time, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
I got a question.
I have a question.
If the mayor? Mayor, please, go ahead.
This is the Brad, so are you looking for a motion or this is, we can do this at any time? What's, what's the deal here?
So? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would say yes to both of those. If the council wants to move ahead with the analysis that Mr. Glover has already provided us, we had based it on a window beginning May first of this year extending through May first of next year, then yes, we would need a motion to move forward with the E R I. If you wish not to move forward at this time and, you know, just direction would be fine as this is committee. And then we could, you know, certainly do this at any time in the future. Quasi caveat is you cannot have multiple E R Is open at the same time. So you couldn't do one this year and then one next year, then the one the following year. But, you know, if you want to move forward with it based on a May one date of this year, then yes, we would need a motion. If not, then you just tell me and we move on with our lives.
Right.
Mr.? Sure, Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Could Brad, without saying any names, could you give us a breakdown on how many, how many in each department?
Mr. Wilson, do you have that information?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking, trying to make sure.
All right.
It looks like two police.
I thought police aren't about.
Well, there are non-police pension members in the police department. There's some I M R F employees in the police department. It looks like two police, one this side of the building. So between finance, C D and admin.
All right.
And then the rest are public works.
Wow.
But, you know, not all one division, it is spread out a little bit, but it looks like.
Majority of it is public works and that's my biggest fear that everyone's going to put in for and then we have, we're down five positions. Only fear I have.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson, can you speak to the reason incentive and or cost savings to the city to execute on this program?
Sure, bear with me one second. Alderman Wesley's point about everybody retiring at once, one of the things that Mr. Glover mentioned was that we can kind of set the schedule, though. So if we, so say, you know, there's three people in one division that want to retire, we can structure it so that they retire three months apart from each other.
Okay.
To, you know, try to get somebody in there before somebody else retires, so you don't have a complete vacuum of manpower in a.
All right.
So that is one of the nice things, because, yeah, you don't want that to happen, so.
Well, technically, they said, don't we have, how many people are, nine people already could have enough time if they wanted to retire, they could anyways, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So based upon the preliminary survey that I M R F did for the city and then Kate had mentioned rehiring people at lower salaries or leaving them vacant for a while, whatnot, we're estimating the general fund over the five years or so of the E R I to save about seventy-two thousand dollars. The water fund about sixty-three thousand. So total to the city savings based upon the analysis we ran of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand over the life of the E R I.
Mr. Woods? That is, just one second. So that's over five years? You're spreading it one thirty-five?
Correct.
So we're looking at ten to thirteen, five, so six, six seventy, six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars a year roughly?
No, thirteen.
Well, one thirty-five divided by ten is thirteen, we're doing it over five years.
About twenty-seven thousand, one thirty-five.
Twenty-seven, right.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, I had the inverse, I had the inverse of the number, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, Alderman Zasmarzki, you had a question?
Yeah, it's just to enhance Mr. Wilson's. I mean, at the same time, like you said, you look at this as a pro team. You have players that are no long, none, Central Valley of the City, everyone's Central Valley of the City. But they can retire early, we can get younger guys in here and lock them up for another twenty, twenty-five years also. Instead of somebody worrying about, you know, I can't wait to get out of here, I can't wait to get out. Not that they do, but some, some people have that theory. You know, you call them negative dancies or whatever you want to call them. It just helps us build a better team, you know, we get them in now, we lock it up and we've got no worries for the next twenty years. Unless they retire, unless they quit or terminated, but I just assume try to rebuild, you know, now we're out of rebuilding, we got a lot going on in this town. We need active bodies that are young, not younger, but maybe a stronger crew.
Is there a motion?
Any, any other questions?
No, just make the motion if you want.
As the oldest member of this council, I'd like to make the motion to approve the E R I as been said.
Second. To the oldest, to the elder.
Before we, before we take the roll call, is there, is there a component that the city pays out?
No.
Mr. Wilson, are we buying out any portion of it or the employees buying out all the portions?
So are you referring to when Mr. Glover said that the city could pay the?
Correct, yes.
As you mentioned, that is a separate form. I was under the impression that that would probably not be a popular decision, so I was not.
That's not a popular decision.
Yeah, I didn't think that was going to go anywhere, so that's why it's a separate form. So now the city, as far as the last one we did and as far as I presumed this one would go forward is we would just pay our portion of the E R I and the employee would be responsible for their entire portion. Yeah, I did not presume that the city would be contributing to that.
Follow up?
Go ahead, Alder, I demoted you, Mayor, please.
All right.
Done that before.
Yep. So for as far as the city's concerned, we're only paying the unpaid vacation and sick leave and that's, that's what we're paying, right? That's what you're talking about, Mr. Wilson?
So the example that Mr. Glover gave of how the employees' portion was calculated, so it's their four and a half percent of their salary times the five years to buy that back. The city, we have the exact same calculation. So whatever our contribution rate is, the city, we have to buy our five years worth of their time as well. So if that person making, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars, their contribution.
Hold on a second.
Was two thousand.
Can I have a follow up?
Go ahead, Mayor, please.
So I know nobody's making twenty-four thousand. So what is the real number that we're going to pay? Because I think that's what it was alluding to. It was our cost. And you're telling us our savings was about a hundred and thirty thousand. But that's, is that after we've paid what we had to pay or before?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, no, that's, that's after.
Okay.
So this, this, for clarity, this number is based on thirteen people retiring and maxing out what they could buy? Is that correct?
So to be fair, there's a couple that we have talked to that we presumed would not take it. And so they were not included in the calculation. So this was based upon who we reasonably thought would likely take it. And that number's actually changed a little bit in the last week. So, yeah, that, that number's accounting for reasonable people that would take it. And then this is, yeah, net after the city's contribution to, to I M R F as well.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Messina, do you have your hand up?
Sorry, I had my hand up for my wife to close the door.
Sorry. Any, any other questions? So I guess do, is somebody entertaining a motion? Are we giving?
Sunny entertainer. Sunny entertainer, I seconded it already.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes, for the young days.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Zasmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
That passes. Next, water sewer rates, Mr. Wilson.
Our favorite thing.
Would any, do, does anybody want to take a five minute break or we just want to blast through this?
Will you make a motion?
I would recommend we just blast through this because taking a five minute break is going to impact the recording.
Okay. Good point, Mr. Murmas, that's why we made you the manager. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I do what I can, I do what I can.
Yeah, I know, you're a good guy. We keep you around. You want to, or, or we could start out with, I'll make a motion to raise the, increase the flat fee on the sewer side fifteen dollars.
Second.
Questions? Concerns? Roll call.
Maybe.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Wait, is there some question?
Roll call.
Wait, somebody has question, who has question?
Mr. Alderman Messina, do you have a question? You're muted.
Oh, sorry, no, not yet.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Roll call. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, no, I said not yet, no.
All right.
We're voting.
Oh, I get that, I understand what I'm voting on, I don't have any questions.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yeah.
Alderman Jacob.
No.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Zasmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
No.
Alderman Messina.
No.
That passes. Next, updated fee, C D and water sewer. Mr. Cage, did you want to say anything? Touch on this or? We can start out with, I'll make a motion to approve as presented. If you have a second and if there's some question? Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second, does anybody have any questions on the fees? Most of them are pretty minimal. Alderman Jacob?
Well, I, I mean, to be honest, there's a lot that we are adding here. I'm not quite sure why we were adding all these fees.
So gen- generally, I'll, I'll give, I'll try to answer it generally. Generally, it's due to the E R P system because the new E R P system and the software that they're using in the building department needs to be broken out, have a greater hierarchy. So where we lumped things together before, we have to break them out. So the fee would have been the same because a lot of these things were put together in one package. And now we're breaking them out so that when they do reports, we ask them a question that can give us a more defined report, if that helps.
Chairman Woods, if I can.
Sure, go ahead, Director Cage.
Just to add to that, Chairman is correct, we're standardizing things with going over to E R P in a few months. And what we're trying to do is standardize some of the inspection fees at the same rate. And I think one of the things that is important to note, we discovered that one of our deposits was, for some smaller projects, was a little restrictive, a little too high. So we've noticed that, we've had some residents have some concerns with that. So that's one of the deposits that we're reducing from five thousand to one thousand. So generally speaking, we're trying to be user friendly, we're trying to standardize things. As time goes on, we find things that just don't jive or just don't add up correctly. We keep a list of them and then we bring them all at once and that's, that's where we are now. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess, I, I mean, I have a few questions here.
Sure, go ahead.
So, construction, water, residential, what, what is that? I'm not quite sure what that means exactly.
Chairman, let's add again.
Sure, go ahead, Director.
So right now, I'm on a new single family loan. They, until they get the full certificate of occupancy, they're not charged a fee for any water that they use. So this would be imposing a fee.
Okay.
If you, essentially, if you're using water during the construction period, you're charged for it.
Okay. Going to the page one forty-eight. So the one sixty, that was increased from one fifty, okay, so that was before two times. So the one sixty, that was increased from one fifty. Okay, so that was before two times the rate, correct?
Say that again, Alderman Jacob.
It was uh, seven point eight one five A. It's uh, the hundred fifty, the hundred sixty. So it was one fifty in the past. We're just raising it.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
That's what I said. Most of these are, are being raised about five bucks or maybe ten bucks. And then uh, they evened out all the inspection uh, rates to make them even across the, the board. And spelled them out for each category. And that was part of the software requirements.
A couple were lower.
Yes, a couple were lower.
Okay, um, what about page one fifty two? Uh, I mean, it looks like what? Looks like we're adding some new fees, like uh, residential addition under five hundred square foot. Adding a new fee for a smaller addition. Someone built that. We're talking a shed here, talking addition onto the home. I guess I'm just looking for clarification on that one.
Uh, it's. Director, do you want to take it or?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, so um, we have a number of categories that um, we try and be reasonable about um, um, clarifying what's in certain categories. What we found is that we're, we're charging um, some people more for a category. Uh, a, a, a good example of this is going back to the deposits. Um, is that for a relatively small patio, you were required to have a, a fa- a five thousand dollar bond. We've reduced that to one thousand. So um, to relate that to this page, um, what we're doing is trying to uh, create categories so that if you have a small addition, you're not lumped in with the larger addition in terms of fees. So as you can see below, um, the main difference here is the um, uh, where am I looking now? So um, res- residential addition uh, below five hundred square feet. Obviously, you have the one thousand dollar bond. Um, and then obviously above, you have the five thousand dollar bond for the um, greater than five hundred square feet addition.
So when you say addition, is that an addition onto the home or is that putting uh, two hundred foot shed in your yard? Again, I'm trying to clear.
Oh, I, I, yes, sorry, uh, Alderman. That is a, uh, an addition to the house. No, if it was a shed or something like that, we'd probably call it uh, accessory structure. Sorry.
Right. So in, in these fees, there are, there is a separate category for shed. So this is an addition to the physical house.
Yes.
Chairman Woods, can I be recognized on this topic?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So what would a three season room be classified as?
Uh, that would be a residential addition.
That would be considered an addition? Okay, wow.
True.
Or, or, or Director, Director Cage, would that be, could that be consider- uh, considered unconditioned sunroom? Cause that would be my argument.
Well, you, um, that's, that's, I think, uh, the Chairman and myself have uh, illustrated two different sides to that coin. So it depends on the level of the three season room, right? Some would be conditioned, uh, some would be unconditioned, some have insulation. If they have a higher level of insulation, they're a residential addition. So uh, I guess probably best sum it up, my definition of a sunroom of what I'm used to is perhaps different from somebody else's. Um, and then really, we go down to the I C C uh, definition to determine whether it's one or whether it's the other. But if it's unconditioned, i.e. not heated, uh, lower level of insulation, then you go down to that porch or unconditional sunroom, as the Chairman pointed out.
Then have a follow up?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So there's some standards, but there's also some discretion that you have. Uh, Director Cage, did I understand that correctly?
Well, um, yes and no. Um, we have some definitions listed in the I C C, the International Code Council, um, which is what we refer to. So the discretion is reviewing those definitions. If it were just up to us, then this, we'd have exactly the problem that we were just talking about, my definition being different from somebody else's. So I think, actually, I don't think, I know, um, the building official and myself like to rely on those I C C uh, definitions because it takes our approach or our, you know, if we have, you know, uh, an unknown bias, it takes it out of the equation.
Yes, fact based.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions? Uh, Alderman Jacob?
Yep, sorry, I, I mean, I have some more on this. Um.
Sure, no problem.
Interior update of kitchen or bath fixtures. So if you pull out a toilet from your house, you've got to pay a deposit of eighty dollars and pay a three hundred dollar permit fee. Is that what I'm seeing here? That seems a little crazy.
Hundred and fifth? Hundred and fifty, you mean?
Well, it says interior update of kitchen or bath fixtures with same layout, no wall changes. So it says non-refundable deposit eighty, permit fee a hundred and fifty.
Right.
You're gonna replace your toilet if you have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars for a permit. Toilet doesn't cost that much. I don't know what a toilet costs.
Chairman, if I can.
Director.
Something on this one.
Sure, Director Cage, go ahead.
Yes, actually, this is a, a new category that we've added because um, it was uh, classified in another section that actually the permit fee would be higher. So what we were finding is some of these um, smaller projects that relate to kitchens and bath fixtures. Um, we have a, this same layout. Uh, no wall changes. This is a lower category and a lower fee. So we're actually, we're trying to help the residents with some of their smaller projects because without this category, they get lumped into the higher category and then forecharged a higher permit fee.
I have a question.
But, dude, I just want to follow, let me just follow up on, on Peter. So if, if uh, Peter's over at his house, changing the toilet, just the toilet, does he need to go uh, do the, the deposit and pay the hundred and fifty dollar permit fee?
Just to change the toilet, no.
Correct. Just to change the kitchen sink faucet?
No.
No, well, it's, it's a uh, interior update. And once again, we go back to the definitions, what's an update? So we're not being, you know, we, we don't have any bias to it. We go through the I C C um, definitions. And the key, yeah, the key here is that we're breaking this out from another section, which actually required a higher permit fee, which we felt was being unreasonable to the residents.
Okay. Mayor Police, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify. So a toilet, you can change, a faucet you can change. If you want to change your vanity, the cabinet and the sink. There's no, we're just, the piping's still there. It's just replacing the cabinet and sink. Or is this sink, is that now a fee? I mean, a shower is probably a different deal, right?
So yes, it, it, when you start moving pipes, when you start adding other parts to the equation, obviously walls, obviously key, uh, electrical work. So um, a typical bathroom, if you're remodeling and changing things, obviously that triggered a larger impact. But uh, if you're just changing out, you know, uh, a faucet, um, a sink, something like that, that's, you're just replacing something.
Okay. Are any other questions?
I.
Alderman Jacob?
Uh, page one fifty three, um, where, and it, the, the generators, it says added, you remove for miscellaneous electrical. So there was a fee before. I, I was just, again, I'm a little confused on the wording here.
Yes, just, uh, Chairman, just to clarify, we're breaking that out from another section. So it's clear. So that the, the whole purpose of the master fee schedule is it's all in one place. Obviously, it's linked on our website. Um, I've noticed a lot of residents and contractors go there and check it. And this makes it easier for them. Uh, and also for some staff, just to verify what that fee is in a quicker and more efficient way.
Alderman Messina, did you have a question?
Nope.
I do.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
That lawn irrigation system for residents, they got pulled permit for a hundred and twenty dollars?
That is correct.
And then let's, and, uh, all right, that's, all right. And then the other question I had, removing a roof and replacement siding and replacement of a same commercial. So there so we pull permit for a roof. So it goes from eighty dollars, not refundable, permit fee is now three hundred?
No, just to clarify, um, that's the deposit, the eighty dollars. So, so the fee for remove and replace uh, roof for commercial is three hundred. And it actually, it was increased from two hundred and forty uh, to three hundred. Essentially, what we're seeing is um, you're getting, you know, if you're doing a roof in the industrial part, for example, there's a quite sizable roofs.
Okay. Hey, can I follow up on that, Chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
But that's only for commercial, correct, Ed? That amount?
Yes, you're correct. And so uh, consequently, if we look at the, just above it, the, the residential roofing and siding is a hundred and twenty. Yeah, good point.
I have a question.
Mayor Police, go ahead.
Ed, so let's say I have a set of shingles on my roof. It's the first one. I do the second one. When somebody covers their, their roof over the pre-existing shingles and puts a second layer on, that wasn't the permit, was it? It's only when you remove and replace?
Correct, remove it, yes. Sorry, thank you.
So. So you don't need a, a permit to shingle over an existing roof? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, the, the definition here has um, remove and replace. Um, I, actually, I, I'd want to just double check that. That's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
It's not as clear as it should be.
I think it's an impairment.
Yeah.
I thought so, but it doesn't say it here, so I'm just asking.
Right, no, no, no. Good, good, good call.
I think that's a good catch because that essentially would say that, you know, we want to make sure that it's clear and consistent. So that's exactly why we're having the discussion. I appreciate it. And we'll, uh, I think we need to modify that language.
All right, Alderman Jacob, you have a follow up question?
Page one fifty seven. Um, site development minor, what uh, B removal, I mean, what exactly is the site development? Or is this, this, if we're taking a tree out at someone's yard, is it?
Um.
Mr. Cage?
Chairman, yeah, thank you. Uh, site development major and minor improvements are related to commercial development. So nothing to do with residential. Um, if we approve a P U D somewhere, it usually comes with a um, a site, major site amendment or improvement. Uh, if they have to make some amendments in the field, which I would say the ones that we've typically seen have been up in the industrial part, some of the landscaping has to change or something like that. That's when that kicks in. Not, definitely not residential.
Okay, I, I think that's it. I mean, I, again, just some of them seem concerning if it was for residential. I guess it was, I wasn't clear on that.
He, yeah, so Chairman, just to wrap up on, on my end of things. Um, so this is, you know, obviously this was newly developed, um, not that long ago. The whole purpose is to make it easier for people to use. We come back and update it, you know, as time goes on, as we find things. These are the kind of discussions that are helpful because we look at things throughout, from our perspective. So the questions are helpful. And if the language isn't clear and we're, you know, unsure on how um, that affects a resident or a business, that's exactly why we have the discussion. So.
One more final. Can I have another follow up?
Sure, go ahead, Mayor, please.
Yeah, Ed, uh, and I know I talked to you about this. So we lowered, if somebody's and I, I'm sure everybody's gotten, I know I got three last year with this five thousand dollar on the smaller project. I'm just thinking five hundred square feet really isn't that big. Is that, is that going to take care of those problems we had last year? I, I, I don't know how big those projects were, but everybody, you know, who's doing a little patio or adding to the patio, whatever. Is five hundred square feet under five hundred going to cover?
Um, Chairman?
Mr. Cage, go ahead.
So um, what the mayor is uh, discussing, we, we had some projects that really had a restrictive um, kind of deposit of five thousand for, you know, someone's building a patio in the, in the backyard. And we realized that, you know, the five thousand was left over from when we were impacting roads and rights of way. Um, so that's why we've reduced the five thousand dollar kind of bond requirement to um, or deposit down to one thousand. Um, I, I think that there was some thinking, you know, we've got to draw the threshold somewhere. We're thinking from what we've seen in some of our recent permits, that five hundred is a good threshold. Uh, what I will uh, commit to though, is that as we're having the discussion now, probably in a couple of years from now, we're going to find, you know, over that time period, we're going to find some other things that we're going to want to tweak and change. If we find that that five hundred needs to be modified, um, we'll certainly bring it back. And um, I'd be happy to say that you were correct. But right now, just on the data we have, we think that's a good starting point. Um, but really, you don't know until the permits come in and then you evaluate them. And that's why we come up and modify the list.
Chairman, can I?
Sure, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for bringing that up, um, Director Cage. Cause I, I, we had a project specifically in our ward. Is that fee would knock out the project? They couldn't afford to do it. Um, and that was a shame because they really wanted to invest. They moved into town. So appreciate you guys keeping that in consideration. More of a comment, not a question.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Jacob, question?
Um, yeah, where are the fee, is it a different section or where are the fees for like a builder's building a new house? I, I know we've had a developer complain that is uh, deposit or whatever was what I, the dollar amount, but a different section? Cause everything, seems like the highest here is five thousand.
Uh, Chairman, yes, if.
Sure, Director Cage, go ahead.
Um, from my recollection, at the, that was a city council meeting, we had a builder had some concerns with the building permit fees. And really, it wasn't necessarily the fees itself. It was more the, uh, the deposit or the bond. Um, and you know, a large chunk of that is for the stormwater manag- um, management bond, which is determined through some calculations through the consultant engineer. What we did um, after that, um, the builder made some comments and concerns. I know we uh, worked pretty closely um, with the mayor to get some examples and compare them with other communities. And, and the reality was our fees, I think, were pretty uh, comparable with other communities.
Actually lower.
Ye- yeah, in some cases a lot lower. Um, uh, the, the bond was, you know, from their opinion, high, but wasn't really out of um, out of line with some of the other communities. So um, that was a concern for that one builder, but uh, we have more single families being built in town. The other builders who do more than one or two uh, in town haven't complained about it. And just in comparison, I think we're, we're, we're not at the low end and we're not at the high end. So we're in that kind of median level, which is uh, my opinion, that's a good place to be.
Yeah, uh, just as a follow up comment to that, working in many communities, our fees really are in line. They're, again, not the highest, not the lowest. And to speak to that bond issue, that is an issue in all communities when you get in, especially now that everybody's hyper focused on the stormwater. That's becoming more and more a thing. That, that guy's argument was uh, like, if I remember correctly, the number was somewhere around thirty five thousand dollars you would have to post in cash. But he could also purchase a bond. Whether he had the ability to purchase the bond, the, the, the history behind his company, the financial wherewithal to get the bond, I don't know. But I've purchased them. I've had amounts higher than that to build the same size house or smaller in neighboring community. So it's not us. Some of it's driven by the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, which we've all adopted and we're playing by the same amount of rules. Which takes the, the cost of some of those improvements, multiplies by one point five and you have, that's the amount of money you have to post. It's it, it's a lot. And, and believe me, sometimes it's painful, but you, you learn how to deal with it through bonding to, to the cash crunch, if you will.
Just to add to that briefly, Chairman, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, and then I, I would add, because I, I know uh, that the council is very familiar with this. Some of the new homes and certainly one brought that was uh, built by the uh, by the builder who came to the city council meeting. Um, they, remember when we, um, a number of years back, we modified the lot coverage percentage. We, we up, up, uh, increased it from thirty. We, we up, up, increased it from 35% to 40%. And then we gave people options above 40%, but you had to provide some stormwater management. In one of those homes, the applicant did go over the 40%, but did have a dry well and some other things that. Really pushed that bond, pushed that requirement up. So. The reason why their bond was so high in that instance was that they were built, they were putting more lot coverage. And therefore had to put dry wells on the property, which obviously is more time from the engineer to review and inspect. Thank you.
Thanks Director.
I guess Alderman Jacob, follow up? Yeah, I guess just a question, you've seen that you're a builder. I mean, so if you're looking at these fees, where. Where would you look to figure out what your bond would be and if you were building a home? I mean, is that in here somewhere? I mean, I'm. Is that in a different section or?
Chairman?
Well, some of it's, some of it's in here, some of, because in, in bigger projects. That spread across the stormwater ordinance, it's a matrix of putting those numbers together. So the. You, you have the house fee, the, the fees for the lot, the water connections, the sewer connections. And you, and you add all those pieces together. The one that really drives up the numbers when you get involved in stormwater. So I just started a house in. Elmerst, so their stormwater requirement, I have to dig a 25 by 25 by eight foot deep bit. Line it with fabric, fill it with stone. That hole is like building the foundation for another house. So I have to get rid of all that soil, fill it with different stone to meet their code, cover that all up and then, then bury it. So as you can tell, that's labor intensive. And drives up the cost on top of the swales and all the other things I have to do. So I take that cost, have an engineer. Develop what that cost is, I have to present it and then they multiply that. So if that's. 30 grand or 40 grand times 1.5, that's 60 times whatever the fees are, the rates are for that. So. That's what really drives up the cost on these things. And it's, again, a matrix going through the, all the fees and adding them all on. That's like an à la carte meal, if you will. You know, I got to get the baked potato, I'm going to get the asparagus. If, if that helps. It, it's not, it's really not easy to sit there and go, to build a house costs $5,000 or $10,000. It's adding up all the pieces of what you're doing on that property.
Yeah, Chairman, if I could.
Director Cage, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, just very briefly, it's for Alderman Jacob, page 152. New single family dwelling, it's right under the Residential International Building Code. And really, just reading that section, you can get kind of a flavor for it. You've got a $1,000 deposit. Because obviously we do a lot of review upfront. You've got a management bond of $5,000, sorry. Construction management bond. And then all the other fees, the fees actually for the, the house are based on the square footage. So each house is different. There's a, you know, a formula there that comes from ICC. And then you kind of move over to the securities, you get the stormwater, you get the DuPage County Transportation Impact Fee. So you have a number of these other things. And I would say just, you know, to echoing, echo the chairman's point, you know, fire district fee, certificate of occupancy fee. When we did that kind of in-house study, when the, the, the builder came to the, the one builder came to the city council. And I looked through, I would say probably five to 10 permits, not, there's, there's not two homes that is, are the same permit fee. So it's a, quite the variety and it's based on a number of factors that within the house itself.
I guess one final question.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I guess, I mean, we're, we're trying to make this simple for everybody. So I guess. Is this, I mean, if a builder were to look at this, I mean, is this? How all other communities have it or are other communities, is it simpler or is it, it's every, every community is like this?
Every community is absolutely the same. They're all, it's all the same à la carte.
Okay, so there's no, no community that has the fees in a nice table somewhere?
Consolidated? No, no, absolutely. Just, just, that's the nature of the way the code's set up to begin with. And, and the structure of, of the building codes that, that creates it.
Again, I just want, if we're simplifying this for everybody, you know, I'm just, you know, I want it to be simple for the builders as well, but. You sound like it's.
Yeah. It, if you do it for a while, you, you get it and it kind of seems simple. I would love it if everybody said, hey, a house is. $12,685, you know, that's certainly easier to calculate than going through. You know, the electrical, the plumbing, the sewer, the water, breaking a hole in the street, the city sidewalk, bond crossing the curb. Right? All that stuff. You just, after a while, you just know that's all part of it. You know, and, and you can't lie to yourself, right? Those pieces are involved and you got to add them in. So.
Thank you.
So we've been here a while. So did, did we have a motion to say? Yes, we did. Okay, we got a motion. We have a second?
And I believe Eugene second, you made the motion there. I, that's what I.
Okay.
That's what I have to.
Yep, that's what I thought. I just wasn't sure if it was this or the last one. So if there are no other questions, if the, call the roll?
Alderman Sorrentino?
I, I actually forgot the motion. Could they repeat it?
The, the motion is to approve the. Fees as presented.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, is my vote.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Eugene.
Welcome to the meeting.
Eugene?
Yes. I said that three times.
Oh, we all, we only heard one.
Thank you.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, that passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings. Prairie Fest 2021, February 11th. Budget, February 25th. The audit contract, March of 21 and stimulus for outdoor dining, March 2021. Is there anything anybody else would like to add to that? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Have a good night.